One other piece about the Lapine project is that it kind of grew in cost, approximately double to what we were initially planning. And so we were actually able to leverage the funding that was allocated from Deschutes County to get additional funding, one-time allocation from the state of Oregon. We were also able to get a one-time grant from United Way. And then we have another family foundation that's giving us a matching grant to garner more local funds towards that project. And so we're actually almost 100% funded, even though the expenses almost doubled compared to what we were initially anticipating. So basically, all good news, just our timeline got delayed a little bit. And I think that's my update. Any questions?
Kara, what kind of a modular unit are you buying? And where did you obtain it, or where are you obtaining it from? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so when we initially were starting this planning, we talked with OSU Cascades and they gave us a few different referrals. And so we decided to go through modern building systems. They're based in Omsville. And they have actually done work with two other relief nurseries in the state. And so they were more familiar with the type of setup that we needed. So we're getting three modular units that will all be connected together to give us two classroom spaces, a kitchen, a laundry room, storage room, several offices, and lobby for family gathering area. So we hope it's going to be a really beautiful piece.
And how many children will you be limited to then with your space? Does it depend on age?
Yes, so for the infants and toddlers, we can have up to eight children in the room at one time. And our preschool class, we're planning on having up to 10. So it would be up to 18 children onsite at a time.
Oh, great. It's really good to hear.
Yes.
I saw an email recently about an open house in Redmond also.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Yes, so since our Redmond classroom is completed, the garage remodel is all done, we're having an open house actually next week on Thursday afternoon, starting at 4:30 PM. So if any of the commissioners are available or other Deschutes County staff, we would love to have you stop by.
Yeah, well, that's great. And I remember, yeah, a couple of years ago, that was the goal, was to expand to Redmond. And now you're working past that to Lapine. So it's pretty exciting seeing the program be able to spread its wings like that.
Yeah, for sure. We are very excited. And we've actually managed to fill, we opened 11 new staffing positions over the summer, brand-new positions for our organization. And we've already filled eight of them. So we feel like we're pretty successful regarding hiring new staff as well, especially given the hiring market right now.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, it's great to hear about the progress on this project. And just many thanks to Mountain Star for adding to our childcare capacity in the region, and especially for more vulnerable populations. Yeah, not surprising that things take longer and cost more than you might originally expected sometimes. Seems like there's a lot of that going around. But great to hear that you're on track and not far off.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks so much. And thanks for the county's investment. The county was really one of the first ones to help kick off all of this movement. And like I said, because of the county's investment, we were then able to leverage that to access more funds. So we're really grateful.
It's great to be in on the front end and providing the seed funding that you can leverage off of.
Yeah, for sure.
So yes, thank you so much for joining us today. Great news, and let's hope you can get that concrete in the ground before it freezes, right?
That's right.
Seem out whatever, yeah. Yeah, I think it's probably going to be pretty close, don't you think? Because it already seems like it's freezing in the morning.
It might be next spring.
Yes.
I wouldn't be surprised if it's next spring.
Okay, okay, I'll adjust my hopes.
Well, because, yeah, I mean, it's basically closing already here pretty soon. You know, the opportunity to pour concrete in southern Deschutes County. But that's what blankets are for, so we'll see.
We'll hope.
The ground is warmer a lot longer than the air is, but...
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana Laura.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next item number two. Okay, Kathleen?
Good afternoon. My name again is Kathleen Mian Coop, and I'm with the District-
Great to see you in person.
I know, it has been a while.
Been on Zoom many times.
It has been. And I've seen you guys a lot this past year. And I'm here with Stacy, if you want to-
Yeah, Stacy Neale, Deputy District Attorney. Thank you for joining us, Stacy.
And we wanted to talk to you about signing a letter for us regarding our domestic violence grant, which is through the Department of Justice. They have, part of our award condition is that we need to address HIV testing for individuals. It's a federal law. We have a law here in Oregon that requires testing of the defendant to inform the victim if there are any communicable diseases. But that, there's a timing issue. The federal law says it's within 48 hours. And the state law says that it's within after somebody has been sentenced or convicted. We have put together an internal plan to address that issue. And we are proposing that to the Department of Justice to kind of address this issue. If they accept that, then we will be able to accept our full award amount. If we are not able to do, if they do not accept our plan, we will lose 5%. This is the second grant recently that we've gotten from them. And the last grant was in 2018. And we had to give back 5% because we hadn't come up with a solution. We think we've come up with a reasonable solution. But they will make the ultimate decision. But we're here to ask if you're willing to sign off on that letter because the grant went to the county.
Because last time we had to, we didn't get $22,000, I believe?
About 22. And this year, I think it will come out to be about $23,000, almost $24,000.
Well, we don't want to lose that.
No, we don't.
No, thank you so much for bringing this on a timely basis then. And yes.
So question, so the document honoring a victim's right to have defendant tested, who created this document?
That's the one, that's a state document.
And so is this across the state? Basically, everybody was in this situation?
Anybody who's received this grant, they're in a similar situation, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going, yeah. So now this is the plan in Oregon.
And so our plan is actually specific for Deschutes County, how we plan to handle and address the issue.
Well, I guess, has anybody in Oregon gotten through this? And I guess I don't have a feel for who else has gotten the grant.
So Portland has gotten the grant. We reached out to them on multiple occasions, and they never returned our call to explain how they got around it.
Well, can you imagine?
Is that the only other community that's received this?
There's a, oh, shoot, there's a, there is another county. I'm forgetting which county it is. Their approach isn't the approach that we would have taken. So I'm forgetting which county. They looked at it very differently, and we didn't necessarily agree with their approach.
They shall remain nameless. Okay.
So I mean, you're clearly pretty far along in kind of figuring out a workaround. Would it be helpful to talk to people in Portland or Multnomah County?
We tried on multiple occasions to reach out to them. The other county, which, to be honest, I truly don't remember who they were. They sent us their letter and their plan, and we reviewed it, and it wasn't what we would do. Multnomah County, we reached out to them on multiple, contacted a variety of different people, and they never responded.
Because, I mean, we do know commissioners from Multnomah County. I mean, maybe, you know, commissioner to commissioner, we could shake this information loose. Would you want, still want to see it at this point, or you got it figured out?
I think we have a pretty good plan. So my, I think what I'd like to propose is that we go forward with this plan and see what the Department of Justice says. If they do not accept our plan, then I think it would make a lot of sense to reach out and say, okay, what did you guys do? And then, yeah, I would definitely appreciate some additional support. But I think the plan that we've put together is, we're fairly confident that DOJ will accept it, and we feel that it's appropriate for our county and how we manage things.
Yeah, okay. And you're not, and I mean, what's the state's reaction to the proposal you've put forward? Are they supportive, kind of, you know, reviewed and said they think it'll work?
So we brought this to the court for them to review it. And they said, so the plan is, is that we will simultaneously request from the defense attorney, as well as at the first arraignment, that the case requests from the court to ask the defendant to do this. And if, I guess I'll turn it over to you, if they say no, like-
So I think, is the question, the Department of Justice, if, what feedback we're getting about this plan, or is it specific to our county?
I guess both, just kind of all of the entities that are going to need to be supportive of this.
So we did run it by our presiding judge, who is supportive of it, reviewed the paperwork and thinks the plan is appropriate. So that should be no issue with our court, all of our judges. And I don't know what conversations you've had specifically with our representative that assists with, have you gotten feedback from her?
So from our program officer, she said, I explained our situation. She said for us to put together a plan, and that ultimately, that plan goes to the lawyers at Department of Justice, and they review it, and they're the ones that make the final decision.
Okay, so yeah, that's what I want to make sure. So it hadn't, it has not been reviewed yet. But, I mean, everything that we've outlined meets the criteria that the federal requirements are. So I would be surprised if they had issue with it. But if they did, we can come back and try to make revisions, so that is something that they're comfortable with.
So you've got a little bit of time to do some back and forth with DOJ before we, before this drop-dead deadline for the $23,000 comes up?
Yes, we, they were pretty supportive. We tried to come up with a plan under our last grant, and we were actually in a no-cost extension. And they were even open to accepting a revision during that no-cost extension period. This particular grant will technically end in September 2024. So we still have plenty of time. We'd like to get this ironed out as soon as possible. And we've been kind of working on it since, oh, probably last December timeframe, and that we've been kind of working through this.
So question, the step one and two, kind of in the memo from the DA, talks about through the Deschutes County DA's office, Victim Advocate Program. A victim advocate will contact the victim to inform them of their rights. Would this procedure flow if a victim advocate is not available for that? Because my point is, we're always kind of resource-bound there. You know, if we're committing to this, is the deputy DA taking on the case going to be able to start the process, I guess is my thought.
And our Advocate Program, the way they have it set up, is there someone assigned every day to handle all the in-custody cases? So there's always someone making that call that morning and advising them of all of their rights. I don't think there's been-
So that's kind of a higher level, that's a caseload that always gets responded to?
All of these cases will always have an advocate assigned. So whether it's an in-custody case or out of custody, meaning are they in jail or not in jail, there will be an advocate assigned, and their first contact with them is always going over their rights. This is just an additional right that they'll discuss with them.
Now, that helps with that also.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'm supportive. Looks like it went from a letter of the chair to a letter from the board recently.
Yes. Okay.
So I do, we need a motion?
I move board approval and signature of Deschutes County's HIV compliance plan to meet the ICJR DV Grant Awards Condition.
Now, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devone?
Yes.
And the Chair, Val Jess. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Sounds like you're, you know, you're doing this ahead of time, so that if there is an issue, we can still tweak it.
Yes.
And you can save the $24,000. So thank you, guys.
That's the goal.
Yes. Sounds like a very good goal.
And I think I'm still here for-
I think you are. Yes, you are. Okay, Kathleen, thank you. Item number three.
So I'm here to ask permission to accept, or approval to accept, our Emerging Adult Grant, which was the restorative justice grant through the Criminal Justice Commission. This is the one that I spoke with you about a couple of weeks ago, and we posted those job announcements. So a lot of good news. We've received a couple of great applicants. And so we're starting the review process for all three of those positions. And we were awarded the grant.
Well, great, and congratulations. You know, I know it seems like we have some extra steps in here, but it's good, good for us to understand what's going on. So that's, I would still advocate for being, just taking a moment, saying, okay, we have this new grant, and it's as well as, as much as well as the service as just reporting on the grants afterwards. You know, a year or two from now, when we do our whole big financial review, we need to make sure we reported how we were required to for each one of these grants, so.
Yes.
I'm just saying, thanks for joining us today. And now that we've seen you twice on this, you know, quickly.
One project, yes.
This, the staff memo for this described, you know, it's talking about, about what's going to happen in Phase Two. And it did, there was a quick reference back to Phase One activities, and, you know, that they were, that the initial results were pretty positive. I was just hoping that you could take a minute and remind us what, you know, what the activity, what the scope of Phase One was, and then help us understand how Phase Two builds on that, or kind of is an extension of that.
Yeah, so Phase One was a pilot. Our goal was to get 12 young people into a pre-charge diversion program. And it was focused on restorative justice. So we had community members who volunteered their time. We had two teams of three individuals, one person on each of those facilitator, community facilitator teams, had personal experience of having been in the criminal justice system as a young adult. So they provided that perspective. They would meet with the young person that was identified to develop an accountability plan. And then, over the course of six months, the young person would come back and meet with that same group of facilitators to kind of touch base with them, explain to them what had been going on, how they were doing toward meeting their accountability plan. We're also working with Thrive Central Oregon, who is serving as case managers, and we're touching base with the young people on a regular basis. We ended up actually enrolling 13 young people. We've had six that have actually graduated. We have four that are still in the program. And then we have two that were revoked due to non-compliance with the program. And those cases move forward through the criminal justice system.
Okay, so that comes out to 12, but you said there's 13 enrolled.
Did I miscount?
Well, you said there were 13.
We had six, oh, we, sorry, we just had our seventh person graduate. Thank you. Thank you.
I was like, I knew you would catch us somewhere, so. Okay, that's great, though. That's wonderful.
Yes, we seem to, things seem to be going really well. If everybody stays on track, we've had a couple of young people that, that six-month time period, they were struggling, and the committee would work with them. And we've extended their time in the program. That has allowed them to actually successfully complete it, as well as completing all their intervention activities that they had. For Phase Two, we are looking at a total of 50 cases that will be enrolled in the program. We will continue with the same model for about 25 cases that our office, the District Attorney's Office, will coordinate those meetings, and we'll have our three members of the community running those, the restorative justice component. And the other 25 of the cases will have, likely be more significant cases. They'll probably have more of a stronger victim that needs a professional mediator, a professional facilitator in that. And for those cases, where our partner is Community Solutions, and they will be facilitating those meetings. They will also still have two community volunteers that are involved to bring that community perspective. But we'll have somebody who can help prepare the victim for that discussion. The restorative justice cases, the majority of them, for an easy term, have kind of been victim light. A lot of times, they have been, you know, a corporate entity that was never going to show up as a victim, you know, Walmart theft kind of thing. So we, we're looking forward to, part of the grant requirement was to look at some more significant crimes and include those in there. But to do that, we wanted to make sure we had the expertise. We'll also continue to work with Thrive. And not only will they be providing direct services and kind of that case management and connecting the young adults who are the defendants or the responsible party in this program, they'll also be helping to provide services as needed and making those connections for the victim or the harm party in the system as well. So those are a couple of the big changes. Number one, a significantly bigger number of cases that we'll be looking at, but also stronger partnerships with Thrive and Community Solutions to help support that.
Do we have other counties that are going down this path? Or is there a cohort of counties?
There is. And so we've started, there's a committee that started, and we'll be meeting, I think, every other month. Their hope is that they will, number one, be able to convince the legislature to fund this initiative going further. I think there were six of us that were awarded the grant funding for the initiative. Everybody is at varying stages. We were one of the few counties that actually had a program up and going. Lane County has actually had a program for years, and they receive funding. And theirs is well-established. We've actually been in communication with them to get some additional training and support. But there are other counties that they are, this is kind of a planning grant for them, or just kind of looking, who do they need to involve? How do they get this conversation going in their community? So it's an interesting cohort, because we truly run the full range of experience and exposure into restorative justice.
Thank you.
And just so I understand all the parts of the system a little bit better. Not only does this program, you know, hopefully provide better outcomes for victims and for offenders, and, you know, put them on the restorative justice track, but this also keeps, keeps caseload out of our courts at the same time, which is, you know, for us who've been, you know, very concerned about the capacity of our courts and the number of judges, and, you know, now very concerned about expanding the courthouse. That's also very good news.
Yes. And that is an added bonus to the program as well, yeah. And we're really looking at recidivism. And the state's definition for recidivism is three years. So it takes a long time for us to show definitively whether the program has impacted recidivism. But we are looking, we have some interim milestones and metrics that we will be tracking, not just the inputs and the outputs, but looking at, you know, was somebody revoked from the program because they committed a new crime while they were enrolled in it? We'll also be looking at how many services and what kind of program opportunities young people have been provided. One of the interesting things that we've run into with our, nearly half of our young adults that have been involved, they don't have a driver's license. And so we've had six young adults that have enrolled in the program that haven't had a driver's license. And so in their accountability plan, that has been a big thing, because it's very difficult to have a job and to get around in central Oregon if you don't have a driver's license. That has proven, even us with trying to support them and assist them through that process, has turned out to be very difficult, because the driving program that was here in Deschutes County, and I'm forgetting the name of it, but they seem to have folded up during COVID. So they were able to provide a car so somebody could take the test, because that's another thing that we're dealing with, a lot of them are like, well, I don't have a car to be able to take the driving portion of the test. I've passed the written portion, but now I don't have a car to actually take the driving portion. So that's been an interesting, I have a couple of calls in the Department of Transportation, but if anybody has any direct connections, that would also be helpful. To at least to have that conversation with how can we, as a community, how can we, as a state, be looking at this? Because particularly, if you live in Multnomah County or Portland, it's a lot easier to get around if you don't have a vehicle. It's a lot harder here in Deschutes County.
Do you have to own your own car if you're taking the test? Or can they use a rental car?
Well, typically, for our age group, we're looking at 18 to 24-year-olds. You cannot rent a car until you're 25.
Oh, that's right.
So, yeah, a rental car, you know, sometimes a lot of the young people have been from socioeconomic condition that makes it difficult for them to have a car or for their family to have a car that would pass the inspection. So that has made it difficult for them to be able to just borrow a car.
I would guess, I would guess if you don't have your driver's license, they might not want to rent you a car either.
Well, yeah, and they're probably not going to rent you a car if you don't have it. And you can't have somebody else rent it for you and then drive it. That's a whole other issue, too.
No, no, yes. Your license actually has to be current in order for you to rent a car, too. I've run across that. Yes.
And we've looked at, there's a program in Eugene, but getting somebody who doesn't have a car over there. We had a young person that was living in Lapine. It was literally, by the time we could get him from Lapine up to Bend to catch the bus over to Eugene and then get back, it was going to be almost three days. And so that really wasn't a viable option for him.
Right.
Okay.
And so between the time, between the time when someone, you know, graduates out and that three-year mark where you can say, oh, they didn't, they didn't recidivize, you're still having some contact and tracking those people?
We'll be tracking them, we've told them all, as they've graduated, that they can still remain in contact with Thrive Central Oregon for that case management piece, depending on which other services they've accepted and partnered with. You know, we've referred some people to Deschutes County Behavioral Health Services, their youth intervention. Some of them have been working with Central Oregon, or COIC, their work source. And so we really encourage them to stay in contact with that group. And then we will be tracking those cases going forward, or those individuals, to ensure that they, you know, to see, have they recidivated or not. One of the things with the new grant, we put in some, a request for funding, and we'll be working with Greg Stewart out of Portland State University to kind of help us develop some of the mechanisms to really track this program going forward. The state really wants to better understand, they want data on it. And so there was an agreement and an understanding as everybody was applying, since some of the groups will not even probably get their programs off the ground, that, and given the timeframe of really tracking recidivism, it takes a really long time. But we wanted to make sure that we are asking the right questions, have the right surveys out there, are ensuring that we're collecting the correct data so that when we get to a point where we really have enough individuals in a program that you can definitively say, yes, this program is making an impact, that we have, we've been collecting all the correct data at that point. So we'll be working with Greg Stewart on that. But also, we've had a lot of conversations with the Criminal Justice Commission to make sure, across the state with this consortium, that we're all kind of track, everybody's program is going to be very unique, but that we're all asking similar questions so that we can look at this across the state on the impact of restorative justice, not just at the individual county level.
Well, yeah, so I'm supportive. So I'll move approval and acceptance of the 2021 Criminal Justice Commission Restorative Justice Grant for the Emergency Dealt Program.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair, Val Jess.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. Nice to see you again.
I see you, too.
In person. Thank you, Stace.
Thank you for making these innovative programs happen.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on other items. And we did get a letter today. Apparently, several businesses in Deschutes County have had their tourism guided trips canceled because of the Cedar Creek fire. And they're wondering if there's any grants available on the county level for businesses that are affected by the fires. So I thought I would bring that up. And I see Dan is not on the call, but maybe that's something that we can look into?
Yeah, we can certainly follow up with Nathan Garabee's team and others to see if there's any statewide assistance or other programs that we might be able to connect folks with. So we're happy to follow up on that.
That would be great. I know I did have a conversation regarding Wells. And I know that they're going to be doing some more funding in the next month or couple of months from the state. So, yeah, this is another, you know, unintended consequence. So thank you, Whitney.
Yeah. I was involved in response and recovery from the Eagle Creek Fire in the gorge. And I know that when fires are bad enough, there are certain kinds of, you know, emergency or disaster declarations made that provide businesses with access to some relief. But I don't, I don't know what the thresholds for that are. Yeah, and I'm not sure whether, you know- that are. And, yeah, and I'm not sure whether, whether, you know, the impacts, the impacts that we're experiencing here in Deschutes County will be severe enough that we would, that they would have access to those, but something that we could, something that could be researched if someone was interested.
Well, the fire started the first of August. It's now the 19th of September, so surely tourist season, it might be fairly impactful for those, those businesses, the guide businesses. So let's hope we can find something that would be easier for them to get than waiting for another year.
Follow up. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Devone, did you have any?
Well, yeah, quite a week last week, I traveled to Pendleton, was able to see the Oregon State University Director Ivory Lyles. We all met him for the Extension, Extension Director, also the new president of Oregon State University, Dr. Murthy. And then governor candidates were everywhere, which was an interesting dynamic, and the governor. So, you know, it was a good, you know, kind of Oregon event, getting out to Pendleton, associated with another, you know, 15 or so commissioners from around the state also. I want to thank Commissioner Murdoch from Umatilla County for putting that together as the AOC President, a little bit of time together.
It was great. I know, I can't wait to meet the new Oregon president, right? They're going to have the new one, so.
There you go.
Okay, no, it was a good event. Yeah, I think they had like 45 of the state county commissioners had signed up to attend, so.
I probably saw only about 15 at a time, but yeah, I probably saw more than 15, that's true.
Yeah, I think they had 45, and it was good. And, yeah, it was really, and then I got to have a conversation with my uncle, who was actually a legal counsel for the Tumalo Irrigation District, I believe in like the 70s and 80s. So I got to find out what was on the top of his investigation regarding water use in the state of Oregon, and then he was talking to me about the fact that we have a treaty between Canada and the United States signed, I believe in 1961, which is apparently coming up for renewal at some point in time. And at that time, they were really concerned with water storage. A lot of storage is done in Canada, but this time, I believe that fish are going to be brought into the negotiations. So that was, that was another side of the day.
Are we, Whitney, do you have anything you want to bring up, Mel?
Nothing else.
Yeah, I'd like to mention a few things. So last week, I, I stayed a little closer to home, and I had a chance to go visit the incident command post at the Cedar Creek Fire on Wednesday. Got a whole bunch of information from them about what we might expect from the fire in the next couple of weeks, and then, you know, I had some, I had some best-case and worst-case scenarios in mind, and then the best-case scenario happened this weekend, when we, we got, you know, a quarter to a half inch of rain in some places on that fire. So I was pretty concerned about the Cedar Creek Fire last week. It's not over yet, but I'm much less worried now than, than I was on Wednesday, when they were, when they were laying out potential scenarios where the fire might jump between Crane Prairie and Wakegate Reservoirs and, and keep running into South County. The likelihood of that is much lower now. Friday, I went to the Community Renewable Energy Association Legislative Tour in the gorge on, on Friday, and Judge DeBolzkus from Sherman County, Commissioner Don Russell, is his name, Russell?
Don Russell, yes.
Don Russell from, from Morrow, I can never remember his last name, from Morrow County, and Commissioner Perkins from Hood River County were there. It's a very good event where we got to, we got to see how community-scale renewable energy projects are not just helping us diversify Oregon's energy portfolio and make it a little bit cleaner and greener, but also contributing jobs, income, tax revenue, various kinds of payments to local communities. And heard a bit about what the Community Renewable Energy Association's legislative agenda for the next session is going to, going to look like. So that, that was, that was a good event.
A question real quick. Are there any community renewable energy opportunities that are a natural fit for, for this area? Because I know that the windmills were the big thing that really drove the engagement for a lot of those counties, but as I say, I've kind of been watching it and studying it for a while, and there's just no, like, big steps for us to take that are the easy ones.
Well, the, the three types of projects that they talked the most about on, on Friday were, we first visited Wind Project, which is something that actually I could imagine could be feasible out in, in the eastern corner of the, of the county. Five or six turbines, that was it.
Did you go climb up inside the turbine and go see it?
No, I didn't do it. I've done that before, but.
I have it, yeah, someday.
You know, didn't, they didn't, they weren't going to do that for the 40 or 50 people that were there. There, so Wind Projects, Les Perkins showed us his in-conduit hydro project, which is something that is becoming more and more possible for us to do in Deschutes County. We have quite a lot of in-conduit hydro in irrigation pipes already, but this is sort of an additional benefit that can be realized when you do, when you convert leaky canals to, to pressurize pipes. And they also talked about solar installations. So both of those types of projects, solar installations, in-conduit hydro, you know, there's opportunities in, I don't know, for, about community, you know, small community-scale projects, but we certainly have an opportunity for a very large geothermal project, enhanced geothermal project in the Newberry Crater area. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of things that the Community Renewable Energy Association could be, could be doing on the policy front to create an environment conducive to community-scale renewable energy projects happening here in Deschutes County.
Geothermal.
Yeah. Last thing I would mention is that you, my fellow commissioners will recall that we allocated $600,000 of transient room tax revenue to a partnership with the Deschutes Trails Coalition for recreation, infrastructure, stewardship projects. And the, the grant solicitation for that program went live this last week. And, you know, they, they could have, they could have activated it earlier, but they figured that during the summer months, all those trail stewardship groups were really busy already, so they would give them a little break and wait until, wait till September rolled around, until, to release the RFP, so that they could have adequate time to respond and focus. So we'll, we'll be hearing about projects that come out of that solicitation pretty soon, I think.
When is the deadline for that, for those applications?
Not sure. I just know that it opened last week.
Okay, so.
I imagine they're at least giving people a month.
Okay. Is there a limit to the amount they can ask for or anything?
I don't have all the parameters in front of me, but, but yeah, there is maximum and minimum sizes.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. And last Tuesday, on the 13th of September, approximately 60 neighbors of China Hut did have a meeting. I don't know if you can remember, but the week before, there was a significant fire again, right outside their door, and so the neighbors got together. Kevin Larkin was there, and, you know, they're talking about what's going on in China Hut. So it might be time for the neighbor, their neighborhood to come back in our meeting and have another conversation in the near future. Probably might be a good idea. Are we ready, then, to go to executive?
Recording stopped.